All right, let's call to order our Board of County Commissioners' meeting for Wednesday, November 10.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Present.
Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Chair Waymire?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to send him a message and tell him to pray now, see if it works.
Good morning, this is Drew Redding, I'm hoping you can hear me, let me offer a prayer for us. Heavenly Father, I just pray that you would be with all of us this morning, that you would be granting your grace and your mercy to us, that we would be able to know the fullness of your love. I pray for the meeting today, I pray that you would just grant all of the commissioners' wisdom beyond their own, that they would be able to make decisions well, to lead well. We pray for just the health and well-being of everyone who is involved today, that you would be with them, their health and with their family and their health as well. We thank you for all that you are doing, all that you have done and all that you will do. We pray these things in your son's holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Right. Have any correspondence organizational listed, business listed, is there a public comment? I don't see any, thank you. Our content agenda today includes approving minutes from our meetings on the first, third, and eighth of this month. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes, on with the rezoning applications, the first of which, 2109-1914. Good morning Kenny.
Good morning, how are you guys doing?
Good.
This first item, we had some little issues come up with the legal description, and so I'm suggesting it to be tabled until probably next meeting. I got a new survey that had some corrections that need to be made yesterday, so haven't received an updated copy of that yet, so.
Yeah, to prove something that doesn't match the documents, can't we?
Yep.
All right, so we'll table the first item, don't need to vote on that, do we?
No.
Table, all right, on to the second one, which is rezoning application 2109-1916, this Livingston.
Okay. This case ended up having a little bit more discussion than what we were, I think, expecting at the meeting. There were a number of neighbors that did attend the meeting and had some concerns in regards to the request. Most of it seemed to involve a dedication that was between the current owner and the previous property owner, and whether one of the neighbors still had some rights to that property that's impacted by this rezoning. I think after I did some review of the documents, it's sort of my understanding that this is more of a private agreement between two individuals, and so if there is some kind of disagreement here, it doesn't really impact the county, it doesn't really impact the ability to rezone the property or for it to be split, but is more between the private property owners to be able to address that issue. I did make a recommendation of approval of this because this property is located just south of the quarry on Tennessee Road. Mr. Livingston is currently leasing this property as part of his cowcalf operation, wants to make some improvements to the property, but is part of that is desiring to own it if he's going to put the money into the property. And with the stream that runs through here, it's hard for the quarry to be able to expand onto this operation, or onto this portion of the property. And so Mr. Penny was agreeable to sell it to Mr. Livingston. Probably the one thing that I would note on the motion to approve the request, there was two conditions that the Planning Commission requested be included. One of those was that the property owner be willing to sign an affidavit that they would not use the property for certain uses. It would be my understanding that we can't, you can't really condition a rezoning, any uses are permitted in the district in which the person's wanting to rezone need to be available, we can't just choose which ones we're going to allow and not allow. I wish I would have been thinking about that when the motion was made, I probably would have tried to get them to correct it, but at this point, my recommendation is that the Board of County Commissioners modify that to remove that item when you do approve it. The other one was just for us, for staff to do additional research on that dedication document, which is sort of what I discussed with you earlier, so I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All the buildings that are on it, there's not a residence, it's just storage buildings?
Yes, I think there used to be a residence on the property that got demolished, and that's part of what was part of the dedication, the neighbor apparently had some rights to rent off of, if that house was rented to somebody else, that they were supposed to get 10% of the rent income, but the house is no longer there, so.
I appreciate the fact that we don't go to the Planning Commission meetings, but you put the entire dialogue from the Planning Commission meeting, so we can tell all of the comments from the public and from the Planning Commission, which helps us to really understand, and as I read through that, most of the comments were not about the exchange of property, the sale of property, it was about other things. I mean, like if somebody wanted to put a feedlot on there, they'd have to, they can't just do that without coming to, you know, getting a special use permit, and so all the, all, most, almost all their concerns were things that had nothing to do with the transfer of the property.
Yep, that's sort of what I felt too at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so what's in front of us is to approve the rezoning application 2109-1916, this is Livingston, to rezone approximately 28.63 acres from A1 to an R2 district, also include overriding the Planning Commission's condition that the applicant sign an affidavit restricting the allowable uses for the property, and to amend our county zoning map accordingly. Any more questions or conversations?
I just had one question, Kenny, the property line on the quarry side, is that fence, is that the fence line also?
Um, I think that that's basically the center line of the stream that goes through there, so I'm assuming the fence will end up being offset a little bit from there.
Okay, I didn't know if there's a fence there that followed that creek along.
Yeah, I don't know if there is right now, I think that's part of what the, Mr. Livingston is wanting to do, is to actually install fencing on the property, and I think it's going to be more, it's more of a pipe fence that he's actually looking at installing, and I think that's where he wanted to have an ownership in it if he was going to put that much money into the property, so.
All right, anyone care to make a motion to approve the recommended action that's in front of us, and the one I just read previously?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes, third item of business, another rezoning application, this one's Clark.
Yes, this application is to rezone a tract of land that's about 27 acres in size from the A2 Transitional Agriculture District to the RE Residential Estate District. This property is up just to the southwest of Wellsville, there's already been a number of divisions in this area, and actually, I think as part of my staff review, this ends up sort of filling a hole between a few other properties that are already zoned already, so where I've usually expressed some concern in regards to spot zoning, in this case, we're sort of filling in the hole between a number of different properties that are zoned RE, and so probably makes it a little bit, the applicants want to be able to sell part of this land, and so there is also an application that's in our department for a lot split as part of this, that would be processed as soon as the rezoning is done. Nobody submitted any comments on this request, and there were no, not really much discussion at the Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission did make a recommendation of approval of the request, and staff would recommend for the Board of County Commissioners to approve the rezoning.
Questions on this one? Approve rezoning application 2109-1919, and rezone approximately 27 acres, amend the official map accordingly.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes, special use permits, our next item of business.
This request is for Ray's Woodworking Shop, if you've looked through the staff report or the minutes of the meeting, you can see that there's a lot that's happened with this property over the years. Originally, this started as a home occupation, they were granted variance to be able to have a slightly larger facility than what was allowed by the original zoning regulations, and then they have come to the county for a number of different additions over the years, and as I express in the staff report, everything I could find, they've always told us exactly what they're planning on doing. When it came to the most recent addition, and I started doing the research on this one, it no longer really fits under the requirements for what we have for a home occupation, and so I didn't feel, from a staff perspective, that I could approve it administratively, and so they went ahead and applied for this special use permit. The main part of the operation is their woodworking shop for cabinets that they do build out at this facility. They have also somewhat more recently added countertop fabrication as part of that business that's going on, on the property, and the current request is to build a new structure to where they would store the material for the countertops and also do the fabrication of the countertops, so that they could sort of separate that from the woodworking side of the business, especially with the water that's used in the countertop. Portion of this does not really work well with the wood part. So staff did recommend a number of different conditions that be included as part of the special use permit approval on this request. Generally, in regards to the, just be developed in accordance with the site plan that was submitted, so that shows sort of the general location of where the proposed structure's going to be located, comply with the narrative that the applicant submitted in regards to what the operation is going to occur on the property. I did include a note that no additional change in uses or further expansion of the operation should really occur in the staff report, I can't remember the exact amount, but it is, I don't know, probably eight or more times the size of what was originally allowed as part of the home occupation, and at least from staff perspective, further expansion probably should have the operation in an area that's zoned for this type of Compliance with building code, sanitation code was a second condition, a third condition that the proposed building shall comply with a minimum front yard setback of 80 feet. There was a preference for another building to be in the setback, but this one should be able to comply with that requirement. The storage of equipment and materials associated with the business should be in the building. The driveway and all parking areas shall be maintained with weather dust-free surfaces, which is just sort of straight out of our zoning regulations. Any sign that's erected on the property for the use just needs to comply with the zoning regulation requirements. Hours of operation limited to 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, maximum of eight employees are permitted. The business owner must reside on the premises, and the special use permit is not void, if not initiated within one year of approval of the request. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, I would also note that the applicant is in the audience, if you had any questions or wanted to allow him to speak to anything.
I got one question, Kenny, why did they restrict the number of employees, what's the reason behind that?
What I ended up doing was looking at a few other cases that had been approved in the past, and a lot of the conditions were sort of based off of some of those, and I think there was one, a number of years ago, that was table late manufacturing, I can't remember who it was by, but I know that that was a condition on that one as part of sort of a, it was sort of the same thing, it was the father and his son that no longer lived on the property that was working for him, and they, I think, just wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to grow beyond a certain point. So, I mean, that's something, I guess, if the Board of County Commissioners felt strongly, you know, you could definitely change that, or if you felt like they needed to have a little bit more space to maybe allow for additional employees, you know, that's definitely something that you could do. I tried to pick a number that I felt was a little bit above where they were currently at, so that they had some ability to expand, but again, this type of business operation would normally be occurring more in industrial area.
You're basically, it's a mechanism to try and limit the intensity of the use, so that it's still an appropriate use for that area.
Yeah, and this one is a pretty rural area, with not a whole lot of other neighbors really nearby, so it's probably not going to have a large impact on neighbors, but, you know, it does help probably limit some of the traffic coming to and from the site and some other things as well.
More or less, that's what's in front of us, I think, yeah, major detriment starting any business is that first capital, that first cost, and there's just a ton of businesses in the county that start this way, or exist this way.
Yes.
Casey Awards, there's a perfect example.
Yep.
For years was out there on that, but then, once they grow and become successful, that use sometimes comes too intense for where they started, so, and that I think's what you're trying to accomplish there. Definitely think it'd be appropriate to talk to the applicant, did you have something?
I was just going to say, can we ask the applicant what she, what he feels about the special conditions, are there any of them that you have a concern with?
Come on up.
The conditions that are on the applicant, are there any of those that you have a concern with?
Hold on.
We have several grandsons, and they may be wanting to come into the business eventually, I would like to see it, read it to maybe 10 or 12, I think he said eight, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
If, I mean, because we've got several grandsons that may want to be part-time anyhow, if they want to leave at eight, that's fine, that'd be the only thing I have a question on.
Maybe we could do something too, if they're relation, direct relation, or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, that would be fine too, yeah.
Family members, all righty.
Yeah, I think everything's fine.
Okay, I appreciate you.
Yeah, I was going to say, you know, probably the easiest would be, I could just change the number, it's definitely a lot simpler for me just to make that change, but if you wanted to do something different that allowed for more just direct relations, you know, that's another option that we could figure out some wording, so.
What's our council say, what's easiest?
I would just raise it from eight to 12, 12 would be?
I think 12.
I agree, that would be the easiest.
Yeah, and that way then, we're not, we just know this number of employees and not asking for-
Not looking for lineage.
How they're related, so.
Makes sense. Any other thoughts?
You need a motion to change that, or we just change?
You make the motion, you just change it on the motion.
Yep, yep.
It'd be?
I'll make a motion to approve the change from eight to 12 employees.
And approve this special use permit application 2109-1920?
Yes.
Second. Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes.
Thanks a lot, I'll get that updated.
Great, I'll stick around so we can get it taken care of. All right, thanks Kenny. All right, our fifth item is to review neighborhood revitalization properties in town.
Commissioners, you have the memos from the city of Ottawa in front of you, there's two of them, we got a little bit behind with the transition from Charlotte leaving and her replacement Betsy coming in, so Betsy and I are trying to get everything straightened out and get caught up, so we have two here before you today, representing 17 properties, you have all the details of those in front of you, they've already been before the Neighborhood Revitalization Board, and been approved by that board, so these would just be approving them before the governing bodies, so that as these projects are completed and meet all of the requirements that are set forth in the Neighborhood Revitalization Plan that you guys have approved, then they would enter the program, so these are likely be starting in the 2022 year, possibly 2023, so none of these would be starting on the 2021 year, since we've already have those taxes set, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Go forward, they meet the conditions of the program? My computer's not loading very quickly at all, can I see the, or the motion? Is it up at the top there?
Get it pulled.
Yeah, if you would.
A motion would be, a motion to approve the properties into the Neighborhood Revitalization Program as each property meets the program requirements.
Right. Have any takers?
Oh, I'll make a motion to approve it, I think it's a good program.
I agree, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes.
All right, on to staff reports.
I've got a handful of things today, the board received a letter, and I spoke with Commissioner Stottlemyre about this prior to the meeting, from Lake Region Solid Waste, it is just a proposed 2022 budget, the county contributes $4,600 each year to this organization, they are asking that we, to keep that flat and contribute the same $4,600 again in 2022, we normally, my understanding is pay this directly out of solid waste. I asked Don if he would like to put this on an agenda, but given that it's basically a $4,600 contribution, that's something I can easily do within my spending authority, and I can execute this on behalf of the county, but I do have their budget here, if you would like to see it, but this is the same historical contribution that we've always made, and so, do any of you have any concerns with me just executing this on behalf of the county?
I might give a little on it, it basically, like he's talking, is flat, we did give our, a person that's leading us down, Shay, a raise, but it's covered under our budget for last year, because we changed people last year, and there was more money budgeted than she was going to receive, so we actually are still under what we was a year ago in the salaries, but in her, David can follow up on this, he knows, in her tender, she's produced 10 times as many leads and follow-ups and on grants, helped different organizations in the last year and a half, she has worked, going to an open house, I believe next Thursday, week from this Thursday, we did a whole bunch of, helped them get a bunch of, the city of Ossawatomie, I think like 11 park benches, and throughout the parks, and Mon at the Bed and the Loral, and just several different places, and she helped get a $25,000 grant for Lynn County Schools, started a recycling program, Lewisburg, park benches and so forth, she helped us get a $75,000 grant, and we're going to get a new storage unit out here at the recycling, so basically, this is something they hadn't, they hadn't produced to us every year, but she has been pretty professional about all of it, what David's all about.
We're, the organization is lucky to have Shay as our director, she is unbelievably motivated, she has made more contacts during the COVID period than I think that we had in probably the previous decade, she is really, you know, motivated to get out there and educate the public and participate, she's persistent, you know, we are just very fortunate to have her, and I look for, as things continue to open up and we're able to do more things, her presence will be felt in this community as well as the other counties in our group as it pertains to recycling and those endeavors, so it's a great thing, and a little bit of a raise that we gave her was very much warranted and appreciated by her, so.
All right, so if there are no objections, I'll go ahead and execute this on behalf of the county. Okay, very good, would invite Paul to talk about this more if you have any questions, but the Kansas Works van, that's been parking down here in front of the Chamber, would like to park in the Annex parking lot, and they would like to set up shop there on November 18th. Now, I, great location, have no concerns with that, but did want to bring it to your attention, because if, you know, you drive by there, it gets full, and so I think we could probably do it outright off of Main Street, but I didn't want to make that decision without the five of you okaying that, signing off on that, so are there any concerns with that, or do you have any questions about the purpose of the van?
Yes, what is, what is it?
Morning Commissioners. Kansas Works is part of the state of Kansas, it's a division that works on workforce, and they have a mobile van that travels the state, or in this case, our region, and that mobile van coordinates with area industries and businesses regionally, but also jobs across the state, so people that are looking for work can go in and get information about all kinds of jobs, whatever they're looking for, so it's kind of a networking tool that the state provides for industry and business to reach workforce. They've been parking, they come once a month, and they've been parking down by the Chamber, and so in some discussions that I've had, I thought it made some sense to maybe move it around a little bit, get a little more exposure, so one location that we've talked about is the parking lot out here, outside the Annex, right along the main drag, just like Derek said, and then we talked about some other locations in town, but it felt like if it moved around a little bit, and we did a little more promotion, and Casey's willing to help us get the word out as well, then that might increase the effectiveness of that operation.
Are they here just for a day, or a week?
For a couple hours, yeah.
Just a couple hours?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Probably going to have to mark the spot where they could-
We'll have to block it off, but, yeah, I think it's just another way to show that we're trying to connect people with jobs, and trying to help the state help us.
Okay, thanks Paul. Yesterday, I sent an email to Diana Starsting Dean with the Historical Society, continue to try and see where they're at on this whole transition from Crestview to the Visitor Center. She advised me that they are allegedly having trouble finding an attorney to- to review our boilerplate standard contract. And so that's where this is allegedly at on their end. Something that the board might want to consider because I feel like the county's been exceptionally patient with this is do we want to set a date by which we would like them to vacate? You don't have to give me that today, but I do think it's something to start thinking about so that we can ensure that this continues to move along. And so I may just ask that question next week. So if you want to give that some thought, and I can send you all an email just to keep it on your radar. Or if you have any other thoughts you would like to share today, certainly open to hearing them.
Let me start this conversation with, May, June?
It was, it was May because we opened the Visitor Center back up in May and we had.
The fourth month of the year, probably?
Yeah.
Hopefully they decide something before we have some big old maintenance bill over there.
Yeah.
I think it was approved, the commission meeting I missed in.
It was about seven months.
And, and you'll recall that they made a list of requests. I believe that every single one of those was addressed in their favor in our contract. So I don't believe that we've put anything in there. I think we gave them, I believe, exactly what they asked for. And so I don't think there's, should be anything provocative on their end. I, so I, I don't understand necessarily the delay, but you might just give some thought.
And the contract is only for the Visitor Center. We're still not, we still have not addressed the building behind Crestview. That's not addressed in that contract?
This is then moving to the.
This would be their lease for the Visitor Center.
So they have nothing to do, so there shouldn't be nothing that makes them drag their feet. Okay?
Yeah. Okay. Well, I'll, I'll make a note to bring this up next week and we can discuss at that point. If you want to put a, because as the landlord of Crestview, certainly you can do that. You can ask them to vacate by a certain date. So you might give that some thought.
Do you want to go ahead and ask them to reply by the end of the month, just that we're aware of it? Just ask them to reply by the end of the month to, to get back with us on the, the contract? And then we can talk about a, maybe set the date for vacation?
Well, yeah. I mean, I, I can absolutely do that.
And then that we are asking them to.
Yeah.
I know you've been in contact with them, but.
Would, yeah. Do the five of you approve of that? Just me saying we would like a response to our proposed lease by the end of the month?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then that's, I can do that and that'll be.
That's a start.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, no, that's.
I would think May would be a, to work toward them to be out of, but May would be a pretty good lax of time for them to get that done, too.
I think just something to ensure that it continues moving forward. Like I don't, I, I, I wouldn't want the, the county to, you know, literally rush them to like get their stuff out. We want them to take care and transporting all of it. But I do think that it's time to continue to see forward progress, so. Last week, we've talked about this so many times. But countywide software had our first demo with a company that we're potentially interested in utilizing. They did presentations on HR-related software, finance-related software, budget-tracking software. Had several conversations with county staff after that. Everyone seems to be excited. I know that Sari and her staff are incredibly excited about the applicant-tracking technology, the HR-related tech. My understanding from Janet is that she is super intrigued by some of the finance-related software. Do you want to hop in? Is there anything you want to add right now?
Yeah, so I thought there were a lot of really good things for all the departments. Currently, like as far as accounts payable, everyone has to bring their bills down to Debbie to get them paid, have them all coded. So that's a lot of work, printing and transportation time and stuff. And this software would allow connectivity between departments. I think reduce a lot of time, a lot of effort, speed up and really streamline Debbie's process. Also make the documents available in the future for every department to look at. Where right now, if they have questions about what we've paid or anything, no one has access to that besides people on my staff and a few other people. And that's just, that, that's just how the system is now. It's just very difficult to get it on everybody's system. And this would be a very interactive system, very user-friendly, where, you know, if David has a bill to pay, he, and he has it in his email, he can just take, copy it right out of his email, attach it to, to a document in the system and send it down via computer to Debbie. It would pop right up in her thing. She would be able to look at the invoice, verify what David's wanting to do with it and, and post it right into her system. So, I mean, there were a lot of really good things. We do still have a couple of questions out regarding how Kansas statute requires us to do things. And I don't know that all Kansas counties are, are following it anymore as things kind of change. But the statutes do require a double bookkeeping system. So we do have some questions into this company to, to ask them how they could handle. We would still like to continue that. The Clerk's Office and the Treasurer's Office are the two offices assigned to those duties. And we have a very good working relationship. And both of us find great value in a double bookkeeping system. The Treasurer's Office does that at a higher level on a cash operating basis, balancing to the bank's, bank accounts. Whereas the Clerk's Office does it at more of a micro level, balancing to the budget and getting information out regarding, you know, the, the individual departmental budget. So the, the Treasurer's Office, if they were to do it all, it would require a lot more work on their part and, and information that they don't need. And then they would have to pass that on to us, which is, you know, the budget is something that, that we handle all the reporting and stuff for that to the state. So it, it just makes sense to stay with a double bookkeeping system. So we have some questions into them regarding that. We also have questions regarding balancing bank statements. Again, we duplicate that work to make sure that one person isn't overseeing the bank account as a whole. So we do that both in the Clerk's Office and the Treasurer's Office. Again, that's a statutory function. I don't know that a lot of counties are still doing it just because of the change of how everything is so readily available on computers anymore. But that is something that we still want to keep just for the safety of, of our, of our citizens' money. I mean, because that's what we're dealing with, is public money here. So those are some questions that we still have. But the functionality, the reporting, I mean, the, the finance reports that we could get out of this system for Derek and I to review as far as, you know, contracts and, and just budgeting as a whole would be an amazing upgrade. So we're really excited to see it.
You know, I, I think we've, you know, over the last five years or so, really done a better job of, of scrutinizing our spending on a much more detailed level, I guess. But this type of software would allow us to do that so much more efficiently. I mean, because it does take a lot of Janet and I's time just because we're dealing with fairly archaic software in order to do that. So Dustin, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was another demo yesterday that involved some asset management software that I think we're fairly pleased with. And then on November 16th, we are going to do, and this is a big one, tax software and personal property. And that will be a big piece of all of this. And so the current intention is after we get through the demos, we'll get together as the, the software group kind of gather our thoughts and then probably have what will be a fairly substantial study session with all of you where each respective either elected official or department head kind of gives an overview of how we currently do things with our software and what these upgrades could, could do, the efficiencies they could create. And so I, in terms of exactly when that'll be, we'll discuss that as a group. But November 16th is the last of our big demos, is it not?
I have to double check with the asset management.
Okay.
So it's not just one software, it's a combination of, possibly?
We're trying to keep it as much under one umbrella as we can. But there will probably have to be, yeah, I mean, we'll probably, I don't know that we'll be able to keep it all under the same company.
And do you know, are there other counties that are using that software?
The one that we, the financial management software that we saw the other day, the other day, there are two other counties, good-sized counties on the software. And one of those counties was instrumental in getting them to Kansas and getting everything set the way that they needed it to be. So we feel pretty comfortable with that. There, there are a couple of other software vendors in Kansas. We have a proposal from one and the other one is the one we're currently on. The software that we're currently on, there's a, a big handful of counties that are on it and say that they won't go off of it until they say that they're no longer going to maintain it, so.
And, and this is something that will, I mean, Franklin County will be on the progressive end of this. I mean, we're not going to do anything that, where we don't have a template to look at. And certainly if we go with the company we're discussing, there, there is a template. But we, I mean, yeah, we will be on the early side of adopting some of this. But we just feel like it's time with residual cares act funds. We feel like we've got a great financial opportunity to do this. And this could really set Franklin County up for, you know, a long time. Like Dustin, do you know how long we've been on our current? Yeah, yeah.
I would say a long time before we.
Yeah. I mean, 25, 30 years, isn't?
I think it's fair as long as, as long as the county's been doing any sort of.
Computerized.
Just think about what a computer looked like 25, 30 years ago versus today. I mean, it's.
The worst record I have for that that I can go back to is back in the eight, nine. Hope it's here. Over 20. And I suspect that the technology's been here, been around for a lot longer. So as long as the county's been doing electronic management, it's been here.
Even had computers much more than 25 years, 30?
Well, I, I would just like to add that, that the people in the courthouse that utilize this system, there are several of us on the software team. And we don't want to put ourselves out there by ourselves. We want to have resources in other counties that we can rely on. And we wouldn't, we wouldn't be in favor of any software that we didn't feel like we had some resources in other counties to rely on. But at the same time, like Derek said, we want something that we, that we have room to grow into and that has all of the, all of the things that we need now and we could need in the future. So that's really important to us. So we, and we thought that what we saw was really good.
And it's going to take, and I, I commend the software team because I do think the, the folks on there understand this and I believe they're bought in. But it, it's going to take patience and it's going to take, it's going to take time. Because as you transition from a software that you've been using for your entire tenure with Franklin County to something new, even though it is, I, I mean, exponentially better, you're going to take a couple steps back while you transition. And so it's going to take good leadership from our department heads and elected officials, going to take patience from our employees, going to take patience from the five of you, take patience from the public. This will be a massive transition, but we will, you know, we'll set it up to do it in as seamless a way as we can. But certainly a project, you know, my predecessor talked about this project about seven years ago. So it's, it's been something we've discussed for a long time. Last thing I have is I am in the process of putting together what I am calling an employee retention committee. It's going to be a group of county employees from various levels of management. Purpose of it is just, as the name states, to try and work on ideas to keep our employees. We've talked about the labor market over and over. We know that it is what it is. And we believe that the best way to combat that currently is to work hard to keep the folks that we have. And so we will be brainstorming ideas. I, I would say probably all of those ideas will eventually make their way in front of the five of you. And so, but that's what we're trying to do. One of the things we're trying to do to address some of the staffing issues that we're having. And on that note, HR has just been fantastic. We, I mean, we're not immune to the issues that other companies are having. And Sari and her staff have just been so incredibly open-minded to ideas. I'm incredibly flexible and working with department heads on ways we can get folks in the door. And Sari could not do that without Cassie having payroll on lockdown. Does a fantastic job with that. And then Amy Hodo does a great job of cleaning up nearly everything else. And that frees up Sari's time. She could not be doing this without those two. And just, that's a fantastic group that we have. And, and, and consider that they're even one down. I mean, there used to be another employee in HR and, and the three of them are just rolling right now and don't, don't need to fill that position because they've just got great rapport with one another. And so just want to bring that to your attention, that, that things are going really well in that department right now. And that's all I have, Colt.
Do you know if we'll have a study session Monday?
I'm sorry?
Study session Monday? Do you know, do you have anything on it for now?
I don't know that I have anything yet.
All right. Float the idea of maybe just reviewing our agenda, the format and setup, specifically maybe invocation. And if we want to do something maybe a little different. I think it's kind of become a, gotten away from what it used to be. It's getting, but I know there's also a lot of time spent on staff trying to get somebody scheduled. Hopefully they show up. What do you, if they don't, like it's just, I mean, quite frankly, I think we're spending more time on that than the consent agenda where we spend a considerable amount of money. Now, I'm not saying that outside influence, say something positive, say something, you know, have good insight. I think there's value in that. It's just maybe not exactly the way we're doing it now. And quite frankly, we're, some meetings that are simply procedural or, you know, we're praying to, to buy tires, too. So maybe, maybe looking at some different options. It may be simpler, too, if instead of having somebody come in every week and, and say an invocation, give them a chance, you know, a spot on the agenda, so many characters, you know, to write something, or it doesn't even have to be religious-based. It could be, you know, but still keep the opportunity there. Like I said, the input, the insight, I think is valuable. Not, not going to get away from that, but our invocation, I think, has gotten a little, little clunky. And I think it's taken quite a bit of staff time to maybe make it, make it work as it is anyways, so. And then on top of that, just going down our, our, making sure our policy on public comments, still something we, you know, we're okay with that. Organizational correspondence, we don't use that hardly ever. I don't know if that's something we want to keep. I mean, the, the agenda, just the process, just the review of it of it all, I think would be valuable. I know somebody's mentioned wanting a vision on there or a mission statement, you know. It'd be a worthwhile study session item, so.
And yeah, I'll take direction from, generally my, my policy from, in regard to study session is if one of you wants to study something, I generally have it put on there. And so, yeah, Colt, if that's something you would like to study, then I have no problem putting it on there. I will say that I know David's. I will say that I know David's gotten me a draft of a policy for the demolition program over at the city that we've talked about. I could absolutely have that reviewed and that could be something we study on Monday as well. In addition to this, if that's, that's what you would like to do. But yeah, we can, we can absolutely discuss the, you know, the format of the agenda and if it's something that we would like to keep the same, I don't have an issue with that.
Any takers on that? Listening to, or at least reviewing it? I don't want to be the only one.
No, it's fine. I just think you can add this to it and take care of a few things.
I was going to wait till my presentation, but I guess this is kind of blending in a little bit. Paul gave a heck of a presentation to the Wellsville Chamber yesterday on two different subjects. One of them you just mentioned was employees and getting employees. And you could see, I even had that, one of the gentlemen that owns the nursing home up there, pretty good size too outfit, he said a light bulb went off in his head when Paul gave his presentation. Paul gave things that he had never thought about, you know. And I know he's not in HR, but he, but his deal is working with bringing in people and out people in business. But I think it'd be real interesting. I, I was going to bring it up to my subject, but, but now that you mention that. He put a real, and then he had another one, I might bring it up now that. He did a presentation to them. He, he specified it to them, but it could be tailored to anybody he speaks to. He just made it to them and he got this rural housing initiative district for downtown rural properties in Wellsville. The state is offering and USDA, they'll, they have a big tax rebate right now. They're giving to like downtown businesses in Ottawa that'll revamp their upstairs into, into housing. And, and even, they brought up another subject I didn't, this is real surprising. If they have an adjacent vacant lot to them, they could even make improvements if it doesn't have utilities and other things on it to just make it worthy for resale or expansion. That had even qualified, so. Might be something interesting to have him come in. And I know he's going to probably get the city one and maybe plan on the county also. But I just thought it would really, I had a lot of people up there make a lot of good comments about, I know Paul's my ear now, and I was going to have him. And basically this deal on, on the workforce deal that he brought up, he was talking more like businesses than the county, but it all, it all blended to the same. His topic was really interesting. I know I had several people said that, he said some things that they never thought about. I mean, just like, it's kind of like, we, he could just give you a, for instance, of what he said. We need to act more like we're recruiters for a college basketball team. I mean, we need to go, we need to figure out, go out there and, and, you know, look, have a, have a system like he's working with a school now of ways that the schools can train and teach different things to tailor to what we're looking for or what the sheriff's looking for or what, you know, Public Works is looking for or, you know, clerical work or, or just office management or, and, and have the schools pinpoint some of their training to exactly what we, we'd like to see in somebody. And tell them ahead of time, hey, if you can get trained at this position, we might, we're looking to offer you a job, you know? And that's kind of one of the things that, that, go on. I'm sorry, God, that kind of got into that subject. Yeah, I thought it was really interesting. I was going to ask, figured it'd be a later time, but to, to go with that same conversation with us, you know, is really interesting. I'm sure he said he was going to go to Ottawa. He tailored it to, to there, but you could tailor it to any town, his topic, you know? And I'll go on.
Sure.
Yeah, no, I think.
Yeah.
Probably happy to come in Monday and share that also.
All right, that's all I have, Colt.
Casey.
Good morning, commissioners. So I have just quickly, COVID numbers are continuing to rise a little bit and our testing has gone up. But we are having a booster clinic November 20th and then we're having pediatric vaccine clinics on November 16th and November 23rd from four to 5:30, so after school hours. Those were just finalized yesterday, so we'll start advertising those to the public today. So any questions on COVID?
Might let him know where else that the pediatric is available.
Yes, the pediatric clinic, sorry, will be right here in the commission chambers.
But also they're available in the county at?
Yeah, so actually all, almost all of the vaccine doses can be gotten at Walmart Pharmacy, Kramer Pharmacy, I know Auburn Pharmacy in Wellsville has access to them. And then also the Health Partnership Clinic here in town has that. And you can get full information about that on our website, right on the homepage. It has every place that you can get a vaccine listed, what they, what they carry.
And right now it's still over 65 or somebody with a underlying condition or, I mean, it's still not everybody yet.
The booster.
Yeah, the booster for the booster.
Um, yeah, there's, there's quite a list, but there's a lot more people that qualify than you think based on that list, yeah. The other thing I wanted to bring up is for the visitor center. Derek talked this morning about the Historical Society. I have continued to have conversations with the volunteers about some of the things that won't fit into the, the smaller space if they move into that. And one thing, or the, one of the big things is the conference table and chairs, tables and chairs. And one of the volunteers had an idea to donate those to Hope House because they want to have a conference room in their new space. And she reached out to Hope House and they already came and looked at them and they're really excited. And I said, we need to take this to the commissioners first. So that's a thought if you guys are interested. I told them that we, you know, there, there isn't anything set with Historical Society yet, so we would probably wait until there's a contract in place. But does anybody have any thoughts or concerns about donating that conference room, the two conference room tables and chairs to Hope House for their conference room?
Are they visitor center property or are they county property?
Yeah, I don't, my understanding is that the, the Visitor Center, Inc., the entity that, that used to rent the visitor center, removed all of the property that was there. So my understanding is that those tables are county property, yeah.
Although when, when I was at Hope House, they had some really nice tables out there that I, I don't know why they would need those also, but I don't know.
I happened to be out there last Thursday morning and the director of Hope House came out, was to my surprise, to look at them and she's really excited about them, so.
Sounds like good news.
Yep, sounds like good news to me.
I don't have any problem donating them.
Yeah. Thanks, Casey. Sheriff.
Good morning, commissioners. I have a few things this morning. Commissioner Stottermeyer was talking about with the, working with the schools and things. Last night we did have our meetings with USD 290 or the Ottawa High School with the, through their CTEC program with all their pathways that they have. The one that I get to serve on the advisory board for is for the law of public safety and security pathway. And we do provide a lot of input as to how they tailor those programs, the type of, the classes that they give for the, for the students that are in that program. And we do hire. We've had very good success hiring students out of high school into the sheriff's office that have completed those pathways. So it does prepare them. And I'm sure all the other pathways are, are just as, just as effective. And then so that, those things are in existence in our community. We're trying to expand on those and make them even stronger, but we, we have a good foundation that we're building on. I guess next I would just say maybe the obvious, we are participating in No Shave November again this year. I believe this is our sixth year in a row. And as has been pointed out to me by members of my staff, we're getting better at it because my beard is more color coordinated with my uniform shirt now than it used to be. And so I don't know if it's their fault or raising a teenager or, I don't know. But they're not wrong, so I, I'll give them that. We do have a couple of our corrections officers that are down in Hutch right now at KLET C going through the Kansas Jail Training Academy and they will be graduating on Friday afternoon. I know that through COVID, we had a lot of the in-person training and things like that that were kind of had to be put on hold. And we've, we've been pretty successful and continue with the professional development of our staff. And so just wanted to update you that we do have two more of our corrections officers that'll be graduating and be nationally certified corrections officers. Right along for that. And then when I came on as sheriff eight years ago, I had talked with Rick Geist who had retired from the Ottawa Police Department and he agreed to come along as my under sheriff. And at that time, he said he could give me somewhere between three and five years. And we were eight years later and he has announced that he will be retiring. So to let you guys know, his last day with us will be Friday. And then Friday morning at 10:00 AM, we will be having a swearing in ceremony. Lieutenant Kyle Westwell, who currently serves as our jail commander, he has been appointed as our new under sheriff and he will be sworn in at 10:00 AM Friday morning. And then that will happen for our office at the Sandswood Training Center. If you want to be there for that, it'll be a short and sweet type thing. Janet will be there to, to swear him in and have a couple of words and get back to their.
Will he still be at the jail?
What's that?
He'll still be at the jail?
Through our, we are, we have a process going right now that we've just opened up for a new selection process, promotion process for a new lieutenant, time to serve as our jail commander. And, but in the meantime, there'll be some transition with dual duty type, type things. And so we just ask for everybody's patience through this. But we do have, we will have quite a bit of movement and transition going on through the process. And so it's an exciting time for, for everyone. We wish Rick the best of luck in, in retirement and look forward to what Kyle's going to bring to you.
Will you have a retirement?
We will at some point. We're walking at the end of December, probably for Rick's retirement ceremony. And should have mentioned that Rick had a son that worked as a deputy here at the sheriff's office, Russ, at the best. And Russ had a medical work on duty later from complications. His badge number was retired at that time. When I brought Rick on, we brought that badge and brought it here. I could, but could honor Russ to having his badge, do that to him. Since Rick is retired, we will be formally retired with that badge. And again, that'll be, that'll be part of what we will be doing. But that'll be soon time in December. We're trying to coordinate with, with some other people and be there for, for that part of the year. And I guess we, we will be having something.
Kyle's appointment will be 10 o'clock Friday morning.
Fine.
Thank you.
Excellent choice there.
Thank you. Good choice. Thank you.
Thanks. Kenny, do you need me to sign those? So you can get back to work and.
I just had a, because I was trying to make copies in our copier around the ink.
Come on, Dustin.
Mr. Ray came and, and asked me one question in regards to the resolution and I felt like it was probably better before the end of the meeting to bring this up other than having to wait again. So as I had mentioned, there had been a previous variance on the old building to allow them to build onto the front of it. And I can't remember exactly how far it came out, but allowed it to come into what would be the normal setback. And we had some discussion on whether he would stay at the same distance as the other structure or if the new structure would more comply with our setbacks for, normal setbacks for the A1 district. And, and what he asked me just a couple of minutes ago is, I mean, their preference would really be for that to actually match the, the same setback from where the other building is. What I would say is our A1 district is a little bit interesting on the special uses is it, it does actually allow for sort of the, the planning commission as part of the special use process to actually set the setbacks. I think what I put in my staff report is, my, my opinion would be that those setting of setbacks would normally be considered with the type of use and usually would be if it was a more impactful use, we might require a larger setback. But the regulations don't actually specify any setback for the special uses that are approved and just leave it to the, to the process to determine that. And so that was his request was whether it would be possible for, for you guys to consider allowing him to just meet the same setback that the existing structure is rather than having to be back a little bit farther from that, so.
What we have now is 80?
Yes, the, the current requirement is 80.
And how much further up is it?
Here, let me see, I have a, it looks like, so I think the 80 is from the edge of the right of way. I think currently it is 75 foot from the center line of the road, which I think is a 20-foot right of way probably. So we're, we're probably at 55 right now would be my guess.
And to be clear, you feel like the regulations give you the leeway to make this recommendation to?
Yeah, as I say, normally I would say this would be a variance process and we'd be going through that, that whole process. But in this case, the regulations do allow for setbacks to be set as, as part of the approval of the special use, sort of based off of the unique conditions that are involved with that use. So I, I think my, my original recommendation was is that it, there's, there's nothing that necessarily stops them from meeting the setbacks. And so that's sort of where I went from the staff perspective. This would be the normal setback, even though there's another structure that encroaches, they can meet it. You know, we should probably try to meet the regulations as much as we can. But it does provide that freedom, I think, that, that the board could allow for a reduced setback if you would choose to.
You wanting to match your other buildings, make it look nice? Sounds like it. Yeah.
So my thought would be that it'd probably be the cleanest if one of you would make a motion regarding special use permit, application 2109-1920 to allow a reduced setback in conformance with applicants existing buildings. And if we could get a motion in the second on that, I think we'd be good.
A move.
Okay.
And basically what I would say is that would sort of amend condition three, which is the one that actually says the 80-foot. It might take me a few more minutes to, to update that, but.
Engage us, make in the meantime.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymer?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Kenny.
All right, Public Works. Just to piggyback a little bit on the software discussion, we did have a demo yesterday. We've got one scheduled next week and then we'll schedule the third one in early December. Included in the asset management demo was Dustin and also Brandon Sands with Facilities. Also had about 15 Public Works employees from blade operators, equipment operators, office staff, kind of a, again, a wide section of folks that are going to be utilizing the software. The overwhelming response was very, very positive. This is something that I've been talking to the staff about for quite some time and, and we spent, I don't know, a couple hours yesterday going through the demo and then discussing it afterwards. The excitement level and the feedback after the meeting was better than I had hoped. So really looking forward to continuing that for many of the same reasons that Janet was discussing. So that's going to be a really good deal. So on regular, regular work, crews did finish the two crossroad tubes that needed to be replaced last week, the one on Vermont Terrace north of I-35 and then the one on Colorado north of Sand Creek. Both of those locations. Both of those locations had, we had to replace asphalt, so we coordinated with Kelo Construction to get that done. Kelo also finished the work on Tennessee Road by the quarry, much, much improved. That whole area is, is significantly better with this little bit of work that we did. Some of the other tasks that our folks did last week included picking up election equipment. We also picked up our new water truck, our new-to-us water truck that was outfitted in Wichita. So that's in our shop, getting finishing touches. We had folks working in the recycling center in Hall Rock to five of the blade districts, along with picking up trash around the county. It seemed to be quite a bit of that the last week, so. So our point of emphasis for the next few weeks is getting our right-of-ways mode in preparation for this, for, for winter. We've had a heck of a time staffing our, our mowing positions this year. And so we're pulling a couple of truck drivers out of their trucks to help, help with that endeavor. So hopefully by the time snow flies, we're in a pretty good, pretty good shape, at least on our north and west sides of the, our right-of-way, so that we don't have the drifting issues. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, David.
We're just wrapping up the election information, getting all the notifications out to all of the winners of the races this week. And we have sent the tax roll off to the printer, so everyone should be looking for their tax statements in their mailboxes shortly. So that's good news, and so I think that's all. Good news for us to have that off of our plate, so.
All right, Commissioners, don't?
Yeah, kind of, only one other thing I might bring up, the, Paul, a lot of people don't know, everything Paul does. He also, he, every Monday morning for about two or three hours, he goes to Wellsville and sits up in one of the, one of the businesses and invites anybody to come in and talk to him about it, what he may need to do, what they're expecting, any help that he can offer them. So, you know, it's something we've never had, and I think the community up there really appreciates it, so that's all I got.
All right, anything, Ed?
The city of Ottawa had a study session on Monday, and I also had a land bank meeting. They had three offers. Two of them were for all of the remaining lots at the Cove. They have approved their council to negotiate contracts on that, and hopefully by next week, they'll all be under contract, and maybe all be transferred by the end of the year, which would be very exciting. It's actually an out-of-town contractor, so we, a new builder in that, and possibly some, and I know, Paul had said, one of the things that we really needed is some multifamily units, and they're looking at maybe doing some of those, three to four families out there. So how great would that be to get all of those built on and back on the tax rolls, so? And the, they also decided they were going to go ahead and seat Emily Graves to the unexpired term of Blake Jorgensen. They have an issue, at least one, by the end of the year that's going to need a supermajority, so they actually, they need to have their five commissioners, so they're going ahead. I think they're going to do that on Monday. Otherwise, I, last night, United Way had diversity training given by Richard Jackson. I was not required to go to it, but, you know, diversity training is always a good update, so I did go to that. And you, you know, you think about diversity, it's not just black and white. It could be age, sex, sexual orientation, it could be a lot of things. So it's not just black and white, so it, you know, and the people of Franklin County, they need to know that if they have something that they want to share with us, we're, whoever it is, be glad to listen to them. We don't always agree with them, but we're, but anybody is free to share their opinions with Franklin County, and that's all I have.
All I have is tomorrow is Veterans Day. It'd be the culmination of events, events here in Franklin County. All the displays and everything will be taken down this Saturday. And tomorrow evening, the Boy Scouts are going to have a flag retirement ceremony at City Park, and it'll close the park down officially then. And there, the drop box for retire, or flags that need to be retired is available there at Fourth and Main by the War Memorial. So if you have a battered flag that needs to be retired properly, drop it in that box, and the Boy Scouts will take care of it.
Can I just add to that, Roy? The, that box has been really successful, and it was actually like overflowing.
This looks like it's very big.
Last week, and so I think, you know, just it being out there, people are seeing it. I just want to let everyone know that there is another one at Ottawa Memorial Auditorium. So if, if the one there that's on the courthouse lawn is full, you can drop them off at OMA.
Well, hopefully the Scouts will get down there and take care of those boxes. Anyway, that's all I have.
Well, we need to motion adjourn then. Give me a second.
Thank you.
All in favor?